Okay, I ask you Secretary of Treasury. Hold the rule.
Edwin J. Warner.
Present.
Ann Walker.
Here.
William Parrish.
Present.
William Pell's present, Scott Harwitz president.
I am here.
We're ready to go.
All right, let's see that we have a discussion on. Just jump right into it, get right to business here. Trustee Welker, you have a discussion on for Sam's Creek dredging?
I do. So Sam's Creek, located off of Meacock's Bay. Thanks, James. It is, I got a, was reached out to by a resident recently who is concerned about the water quality because historically, and some of you will be able to chime in on this, historically, the trustees dredge the mouths of these creeks on Meacock's Bay, and this has not been done in many years. And there's concern because with the mouth of the creek being necked off, the salinity changes and rises with the, excuse me, falls within those water bodies, making it more fresh. And with fresher water comes a possibility for harmful algal blooms. So this resident was investigating, he is a fairly new homeowner to the area, but he, in speaking with others, discovered that these dredging projects had been done by the trustees, and he's interested in perhaps pursuing this. And I spoke quickly with trustee Warner about this, and perhaps you could elaborate a bit.
When I was first on the board, they did a dredging project. It was the northerly part of the entrance to Sam's Creek. It was by the Hewitt property, and they actually removed Mr. Hewitt's dock, went down the beach and dredged right where that cursor is there, that little channel there, and then they did a, you know, a small sand fencing and grass planting. But over time, it just filled right back in because it's a highly dynamic area, and when the bay's high, the water really laps against that little island there or peninsula, and it's, you know, very liquid, the sand, so it filled back in. We also did a, later on in my, like, was it eight years ago, Billy, maybe 10 years ago?
Yeah.
Onto the south there, way to the south, James. Yeah, we did that little cut through there. I believe Jim Walker had gotten a permit from us, and that was the last dredging project we had done. We were supposed to take the material and put it on the beach, the Bridgehampton Beach Club, stockpiled on that site, but I believe there was a permit that was gotten by the homeowner with the help of innocence and was never executed. So that's where, I believe, the homeowner was proposing the cut through.
So this, oops, sorry.
So, I mean, I mean, like I said, we had given the permit in the past. The only issue that-
Is it the spoil site?
Yeah, is, was, would be the spoil site, and, you know, other than that, I think it's a good project because Sam's Creek, if it continually is going to be necked off and not overtopped by saltwater, the whole entire ecosystem will change from a marine environment, which there are, you know, perch in there now, eels in there, blue crabs, and if it gets too fresh, all of these species are going to perish, and we're going to have, like, carp and goldfish and other fish that only are used of real fresh water. And then we're going to have the intrusion of the phragmatis and other grasses around the perimeter of the pond and slowly filling in with a higher salinity that pushes that grass back further upland. And like Ann mentioned, the blue-green algae is probably the biggest concern because a lot of people have docks in there, a lot of people kayak and paddleboard, and if the blue-green algae gets to the point where it's similar to SAG, it's, it's, it could cause a respiratory problem and health problems.
So let me ask you a question. When this initially was done, when you first got on the board, was what year?
Two thousand and six, seven.
In that era of time, was there a separate budget item on the general fund side of this town for dredging?
Well, when I first become a trust, became a trustee, there was a dredging account that was specifically for the town, it was for the Parks Department and Highway and the trustees, and it was a shared account.
Where's that now?
That money, the last project that we did with it was at Woolly Pond, and that was the final budget that was left from the dredging.
So how, how is this accounted for on a sustainable basis on a townwide level?
It isn't. We would have to ask with a private partnership and a public partnership, the trustees and a private homeowner. We have done dredging at Channel Pond, we have done dredging Cobble, we did dredging at Mud Creek, we did dredging at-
Fresh Pond.
Fresh Pond, no, I'm talking about all the ponds or all the creeks around here.
Oh, just here.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, we have done it and we've used our, solely our budget, but I can say almost every one of these projects that have been done historically have filled in, and now there's other places that have opened up. Cobble, where we were doing the dredging originally, by Flying Point, is completely changed, and now it's a natural inlet. This, on a high bay and a strong northwesterly wind, it does overtop here, but it does not facilitate-
Flushing.
Flushing or deep enough water for people to utilize Sam's Creek, a channel to get, an available channel to get to Meacock's. And I think that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to get a sustainable channel that we could manage for-
The town's going to have to put that back in their budget line, the joint dredging account. They took it out years ago because they were going, we were going through hard times.
Yes.
Because you, I mean, what cubic yards are we talking about, do we know?
Oh, probably less than, less than, like, five, less than 5,000 cubic yards.
5,000, that's still a lot of cubic yardage.
Yeah, but I mean, to do it right, I mean, if, Jim Walker had given us plans, and they were actually going to dredge like 100 feet out in a bay, because the first 100 feet on that cut on the south end there-
James, can you-
You need to be able to get to some kind of water depth. If the bay is high, you have about, I don't know, 24 inches, almost 30 inches of water. At a low bay, it's only about five or six inches deep.
Right, so 5,000 cubic yards is a chunk, so this would be a bit of a project.
Yeah, but this is, this is a project that we could take that material, put it right on the barrier beach along the Atlantic coast, and it could be, you know-
It'd be good for water quality.
It'd be good for water quality and also be good for, you know, beach restoration because it's all clean sand.
Yeah.
So I spoke with Jim Walker about this, and he said that he, this would be a renewal of the permit, not a modification, and he said that the spoil site, James, can you just go a little bit more to the east? He said the spoil site, no, the east, the other way, he said the spoil site is on the north side of the parking lot of Meacock's Bay. So, I mean, of Meacock's Beach. So, just when you come over the little bridge on, onto Dune Road and Bridgehampton, you can see the parking lot there, right next to the Bridgehampton Surf and Racket Club, that area right there was the spoil site that was designated. And he said that this is a doable project, that we have willing, homeowners that are willing to help. He thinks that the, I mean, it will take time as, as most things do, but he said that this would be a doable, good project, and that Jim was very willing to work on it.
Do we have an estimated amount of material?
I, I, no, I don't have that. I didn't get, I didn't ask for a quote for the permit, and I didn't ask for an amount of material.
So I think we need to further, you know, do some homework on this.
I wanted to see what the feedback was from the board so that we could do next steps.
Feedback is, you know, obviously budgetary, permit, you know, permit, you know, logistics, so I think we, you know, we got to figure that all out, obviously. I mean, it sounds like a great project, if, you know, if we can put the money together to do it, and the communities, you know, neighbors and everybody's for being involved in it.
The benefit is going to be, you know-
Very good.
For a few thousand dollars or whatever, maybe, maybe $20,000, the benefit for $20,000 would be that all those homes that have docks and have jet skis and small vessels and paddleboards and kayaks, they will all be able to access Meacock's Bay. So they're going to get a lot more, I mean, the bigger picture of all those dozens of homes, all going to benefit from this.
I don't see it being 20,000, I see it being substantially greater than that.
I don't know.
5,000 cubic yards at 20,000, I would see-
The greatest, the great, actually, the greatest benefit is the environmental part of it.
It is, but, but the homeowners are also going to benefit greatly from it too.
Yeah, they're going to benefit, even if you take the jet skis and the paddleboard out, not, not looking at green water, not the smell, not worry about the algae-
Yep.
And the fish and the whole environment.
And the fish don't, and-
Yes.
Yeah. All right, let's do some further investigation.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
All right. Any other discussions? I don't think there's any on the agenda at this point in time. I have the Costwell LLC, 40 Ocean Avenue, Village of Quogue, Mandeville Psychological Services Inc.
He emailed me, I think he's going to be on Zoom if needed, but we're all set with everything.
Right, so you want to show the board what?
So it was on for a previous work session, and we asked for stamp plans, and we received that, so.
Right, so the project itself was, was fine, we just needed to comply with our municipal regulations and have the stamp plans, which have been received, and we, they're good, so I think at this point in time, the project can advance, he's meeting all the requirements.
No, it's a good project.
Okay, so-
Advance.
If we're good with that, it could advance, we don't need to jump in on Zoom to tell us he sent stamp plans, okay? So he could advance that one. And then we have trustee Pell.
I have, address is 309 Norac Road, North Sea, InterScience, I see them here.
They're here.
Okay.
Good morning, Carl Benacosta for the applicant. InterScience is on Zoom, but they're saying that you are muted, and they can't hear anything, so I don't know if Charles-
I just said-
Oh, okay.
Is there a signing sheet up there?
It's right here.
So what consultant is representing them? No, what, which, one of their consultants in the office is it Jim Walker?
Sabrina Kelly.
Sabrina Kelly. Is Sabrina Kelly on? Charles, do you-
Who needs to come in?
Sabrina.
Sabrina Kelly from InterScience?
James, did you say they sent more paperwork in on this?
Yeah, this is, this is some of the stuff.
Thanks, Charles.
Which we had asked for, this was already on a prior-
Work session.
Yeah, this was a prior work session.
The dock hasn't changed, you consider the dock. The applicant's primary goal or intent for this dock is to use it with, with a boat, and there was concerns about the depth to the bay bottom and the water depth around this boat. So we had proposed, given that it's a fixed pier dock, it's not a floating dock, we had proposed a specific type of boat which draws, which has a .7 foot or 7-inch draw.
A flat-bottomed skid.
And we put, we provided some specifications on that boat, which he would like to use in conjunction with that dock.
The trouble is that our permit doesn't say what kind of boat you can be there, could be a CR boat, or 20 years from now could be another kind of boat, and so we can't really put that into the permit that he's going to use a prop on a boat.
If you wanted to put a condition like that, we would certainly be agreeable to it.
I don't know, what do you think, Mark?
Yeah, I'm not sure if the Blue Book will let us go far enough to, to regulate boat size. We can with docks and location.
I don't feel very comfortable about that.
That might require an amendment.
Because that, that leads us more for the Bay Council, so we can't get them to do stuff we want now to regulate, you know, go buy, check, make sure the guy has the right kind of boat there in 10 years.
We, you could buy covenant if you wanted, and we would do a covenant.
Yeah, but then it becomes problematic over time, you know, because, you know, these docks last for 20, 30 years, and over time, there could be multiple, you know, homeowners, and they have maybe one, somebody wants a Boston Whaler, somebody wants a little sailboat, you know, and it's, I think, I just see it being problematic. I think that our rules and regulations specifically are, deals with the dock, the float, the depth of water, and I think that's where we should stay in that, in that little envelope. I don't think we should broaden it to vessels tied up at the, at these docks.
So when a vessel is prohibited, what sort of review do you guys, does the board do as far as policing that?
Well, I mean, you really, I mean, if you have a dock and you have, you're warfing out, you really can't prohibit a dock from having a vessel. I mean, because it, there might be three inches of water at low tide, but at high tide, if there's a three-foot rise and fall, you have, you know, 36 inches of water or more to be able to navigate in there at high tide. So it's, it's, it's more self-govern, governing as far as the tides and the depth of the-
Yeah, because you don't want it, if you want your boat to sit on the bottom.
I, yeah, it's common sense.
We limit to no greater than two boats, right?
Yeah.
That's what it is, we limit to no greater than two vessels. So then you got to just figure out what's going to work and what's not going to work.
And your client would have to figure out what type of boat. If he has a boat that draws more than, say, three feet of water or two feet of water at low tide, it's going to sit on the bottom, so probably he should get a, have the dock and have a mooring offshore in deeper water so that he can put the boat on a mooring at low tide, and then when the tide comes high, you have a little boat, the dinghy that goes out, and you can get the boat back and forth. I mean, you know, the, we don't make the site specific for these boats that they can come and go at high-low tide.
Now, the handrails.
James, can you put a overhead shot?
Plan to-
Of the, of the location. Can you draw in the dock?
Drawing the dock?
Yeah, or put a line in where the dock's going to go.
It's going to be very-
Basically.
It's right in the middle of the prop, and it hits-
That way, you know, he can see what it's, trying to explain them, but having a mooring out, what we talked about last night.
I mean, I don't know how accurate this is.
That's, that's pretty much what, yeah. And there's several of the docks in there that are very comparable to that, so, you know, we've permitted them in the past, and it would be, you know, nothing different or special that we would be doing there. I mean, it's just allowing them to wharf out and to get to-
To the location.
Yeah.
So where do you want those handrails to be, do you know?
So Sabrina, are you on?
Charles, is Sabrina on from InterScience?
Well, unmute.
Could always hold this over until she comes.
I mean, it looked pretty minimal there.
Can she speak on the phone as she's asking?
Yeah, looks like just two, two railings.
Yeah, that looks like it's actually, it's very minimal. That's what it's going to be, that's the cross section.
Yes.
Now, is that two-by-fours or two-by-sixes?
Zoom in on that, is there?
Should be two-by-fours.
If it's a two-by-fours, that'd be-
Perfect.
Yeah.
Yep, that's minimal.
And it goes over the marsh, so you would need a railing when it drops down, so-
It's minimal.
And can you just show the, the bathymetry, please, of that cove? So it's pretty much a foot and a half come offshore a little bit?
Yeah, there's not much water in there at all.
It's all the same depth of water.
So he's going to a foot and a half, which if he wanted to use a paddle, a foot pedal kayak or something like that, he could get that out there too, so I think, yeah.
It's very shallow in there.
Yep.
Yeah.
Is there eelgrass?
No.
No, it's all like hard sand.
No, it's muddy, it's very muddy, and there's very little smudge aquatic vegetation in there.
I thought there was some sand along the edge, so I went and looked.
Yes, on the, I mean, it's all sandy along the beach, but the whole middle of it is mud.
Right.
I mean, it would be consistent to what other properties have and, you know-
I think it's okay.
He would just have to get the boat that would, you know-
With a bill?
Yeah, but not with the poles going out. Do they still have the two poles?
Yes.
They, they have to go.
So remove the boat, remove the poles?
Yeah, off the plan.
Off the plan and the cover sheet.
That's simple.
So Sabrina was asking if she could call in, is that permissible?
Yeah, but we're not going to get the voice on the tape, are you?
If you hold it up on the phone.
You can hold the phone, but I don't know if she'll hear it, it seems a little clunky to me.
Mark, is that okay with you?
If everyone can hear it, it's allowable, but-
I don't know, I think if she wants to talk, she has to come to Zoom or come to the meeting.
I mean, we, do we need any more thing more than that?
She's trying, she's on the Zoom.
She's trying.
Do we need anything more? I mean, it-
She is no longer on the Zoom.
I think there were issues.
Carl, you think that's an issue? Just take the boat off the plan and the two pilings, the rest of it's basically-
Approvable?
Approvable.
I, I, you know, I'll have to speak to the client. If you want to adjourn them to the next work session-
Yeah, we can do that, make it easier.
Sure.
Yeah, because I mean, basically, it's, you know, like there, it's right there.
Make sure we get it right, and everyone's happy.
Okay, great.
When is the next work session?
21st.
21st.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Trustee Warner.
Yes. We have-
Viral permits here.
Yep. Christopher Dunlap.
You could take that over to the podium if you want, probably should be there anyway.
I've been at the site three times, James.
Yeah.
And then we brought trustee Welker, also joined us the last time we walked the site. It is a unique piece of property on Chinookah Bay. It's a dock application, which they're asking to put a catwalk and a ramp and a float out to Chinookah Bay. The first site was, there was all eelgrass there, the dock would have been situated right in an eelgrass bed, and the next site was a little bit further to the southeast, and then the final site was much further to the southeast. It's not quite as deep there, but it, there is not as much eelgrass where the proposed dock is going to be located, situated. But the way the property is situated and at angles, it's going to put this dock right in front of the neighbor's property, even though the projected property lines would allow it per our rules and regulations, the adjoining property to the south is going to have that dock sitting right in front of it, you know, right in front of it. I, I think in dealing with a couple of other docks that we've permitted and similar areas like this where there is a road end and a lot of beach use by the public, and it's, you know, it's going to be, could be a contested application, I think it would be prudent for us to hold a public hearing on this, to get input from the neighbor who's going to be having the dock situated directly in front of his house, and also the people that walk the beach and utilize this whole area. And I'd also like to get some input from the college as far as the eelgrass in the area and how the dock could potentially affect it.
I agree. This is a heavily-used beach recreationally and also just for beach walking, and that's one of the most vibrant areas of eelgrass in Chinookah Bay, or at least in eastern Chinookah. The one thing I would ask is, would it be possible to ask the homeowner to notice this not only on his street side, but also on the beach side, so that the notice of public hearing is visible to-
Yeah, we'll have to give him two signs.
People who are walking the beach.
Yeah, I believe Trans Lane is a private road, and it would, and it's a flag lot off of it, so the likelihood of someone seeing this posting is going to be very unlikely in that area, but if you put it on the beach where most of the people would be directly affected, I think it's the best way to do it. Can we do that, Mark, as far as?
I mean, you could add more to it, we definitely have to have it posted nearest to the, nearest public street. That can't be avoided. But in addition to that, you could ask them to post it. It's not in the Blue Book, so it's not technically required, but you could ask for it.
Because I know we have permitted a dock in western Chinookah Bay in a very similar area to this, and we've had multiple calls in the office and people complaining. These people do have the right to wharf out, but I want to make sure it's done properly. I mean, we have the winter season coming up, so we can have the public hearing and get this, all the questions and concerns ironed out before the spring season, when if the dock is allowed to be placed there, that it can be built, and we could have gotten rid of all the issues.
When was that picture taken? Clay, would you-
I have no problem with the public hearing, but some of the issues that you brought up, I do have concerns about. Water depth, I was there yesterday at extreme low tide, and it was an unusually moon-low tide, and we still had two and a half feet of water there, which is what the town code requires. The projected property line, I went to great expense to get that issue straightened out because prior to that, we had all thought that the, that the, the low-water line was the property line, and it wasn't. And with the new survey, he identified the fact that the low-water line and the high-water line is not the property line. The property line is just, it's in flux, it goes with in and out. But the issue of the marked property line that I had staked shows that he has about 350 feet of beachfront, and he is, he is entitled to use that beachfront, and he's, according to riparian rights theory, that he is allowed that use of that area over there. And the other neighbor, it's in front of his house, but a lot of issues are like that, where property lines extend out in front of the people, in front of the things, and you cannot impede the neighbor's rights on, either neighbor's rights on themselves. The law goes on the riparian right line, and that's pretty much set, set down. Now, Mr. Dunlap will probably grant use of one side of the float to his neighbor, all right? So then he doesn't have to go on a mooring, he doesn't have to walk in the water in all, all seasons of the year to get to his thing, his thing, and then by the use of not using a mooring, you don't impact a circle of 360, 60 degrees, circle as it goes around the mooring at the winds and the tides, and it's much better than having it, you know, it's much better to have it in one place where there's no grass. Now, yesterday I was out there, like I said, and there still is no eelgrass, there's a large rock with some eelgrass on it, and you walk into it, but that's not in any way, shape, near what we're going to do. So I did not find any eelgrass then, I went out several times by boat, I have underwater photography of it, if you want to see it today, I have it, and there still is no eelgrass there. No matter what you say, there is no eelgrass there. Witnesses, the survey has said it, the underwater survey has said it, there's nothing there. Other than a few blades.
You have that to show us today?
Hmm?
You have that to show us today? Present to the board? Want to see that?
Yes.
Yeah, well, I think we should save it for the public hearing.
Okay, yeah, that's true, yeah, we could use it. Yeah, we could save it for the public hearing.
We're seeing, we're gonna-
We'll wait for the public hearing, if we're going to have a public hearing anyway. That way you can make a nice presentation.
And, you know, just to make it clear that this proposed dock is coming off of your client's property, but it's on trust property, it's underwater land at the trustees' hole.
I understand that, but in the past, you have allowed people to put docks on trust property.
Yes, we do, but I mean, I want to make sure that if there's any issues, that we can work them out before we give a permit. The last thing we want to do is to give a permit and have a dock placed in front of someone's house, and there's, you know, I've dealt with, we've dealt with this.
Well, yes, we do permit docks on trust property.
But the issue of it in front of the other house, excuse me, is that you maybe put it over there, all right? And by, when I originally put it off, straight off the, the walkway, there was no eelgrass. The eelgrass beds shifted in two seasons, so then I had to move it further south, and then you had me move it again, further south again. So it's not, it's not that we haven't been trying to stay within the confines of the visibility of his things, it's that the town, the trustees, had maybe put it to the south, put it to the south, put it to the south. So if we had originally put it where I wanted to put it, it wouldn't have had any problem. And yes, eelgrass would have grown under it, but eelgrass is very resilient, the dock is situated at a height where eelgrass grows under it.
All right, look, can we have this, we're going to have this whole conversation again at the public hearing, so let's, and I do understand it.
What I'm frustrated with is the- What I'm frustrated with is the constant delays that you've put upon this, this client, this homeowner.
We have to vet it properly. That way there's minimal amount of issues. So I'd like to.
Yeah, no, listen, Clay, I can appreciate everybody's in a hurry. I get it. But the reality is, as trustee Warner pointed out, it's, it's trust property. And yes, we do permit people to utilize trust property, but the trustees want to take into consideration where it's cited and various different environmental concerns and other concerns from the community or or other, you know, boards in the town, whatever it is, we want to be able to make a good decision. And it takes a little bit more time when you do that. And as trustee Warner also pointed out, that yes, things were done a certain way in the past, but there were also unintended consequences that occurred from some of those decisions or the way things were cited. And I think that when you, when you have that occur, you also want to learn from that and take into consideration those issues so that the decision you make on this is good. I fully understand what you're saying. But the board's just trying to arrive at what they believe is a, is a good decision.
No, I, 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 so when you start, I said the, the other meeting would be fine.
Have a public hearing. Save a lot of that, make, you know, the pictures and all that so you can put together a nice presentation for the board and for the public. And then we can, we go from there. I think that's the best way to go at this stage in time.
We could put the notice of public hearing on for the 11:21.
Yeah.
One o'clock meeting and hold the public hearing. We could skip a meeting, the December 5th meeting to have the mailings go out and then hold the public hearing on December 19th at 1:00 P.M.
Okay, I think that's fair. That gives the time.
Can you give me a couple of times when that public hearing will be?
So the, the notice will be on the November 21st, one o'clock meeting and the public hearing will be held on December 19th at one o'clock.
James, can, James, can you email Clay this information?
Sure.
Jessica?
I ordered my new ears. They came in today, but I'm here.
Okay, so the notice will go on for the November 21st meeting. And then you'll have between then and December 19th to do like the mailings. And December 19th will be when the public hearing is held. One o'clock.
All right, well.
Thank you.
Keep, keep it, okay. Thank you. All right, trustee Warner, you have another one.
Yes. Theodora Kilisah. 553 Far Pond Road, Shinnecock Hills. Is there anybody here to?
Is there anybody on Zoom for this application?
Theodora Klysis?
Yeah.
53 Far Pond Road, Shinnecock Hills, represented by the owner of the property. Do we have proper?
Charles, do you see?
Nobody?
Go ahead.
Proper completed application for this?
Yeah, everything's, I believe they originally had submitted the application. They wanted to go and put the bulkhead 18 inches in front of the bulkhead that's there now. I've been at the site a couple of times. I asked James to look at it. We looked at it. There's a lot of wetlands in front of, directly in front of the bulkhead. So I contacted their consultant and asked them to revise the plans to make it an in kind, an in place, bulkhead replacement, basically removing the bulkhead that is presently there and putting the new bulkhead directly back in that spot. So there's no net loss of any wetlands. Currently, there's a lawn right up to the bulkhead with the elevation right up to the top of the, the old bulkhead. So they're going to remove that bulkhead and basically replace it with a vinyl bulkhead with, you know, hardwood material.
Can you see a picture of it, please?
Did they?
Yeah.
They submitted a new set of plans, right? Is that, I mean, a new cover sheet, James?
Yes, but they didn't put the dimensions on the cover sheet.
Oh, this is.
Okay.
Little house next door. We talked about this before.
Where's the plant? Can you zoom in on that at all or?
Do you want to zoom in on this one?
Yeah, man, I want to see the plans. I can't, it's so small.
Yeah, I know. We'll, you know, have new plans.
So is the bulkhead going right up to the new, to the little house, to the boathouse?
Yes, there's a boat, there's a, a little boathouse there. And then there's.
Doing the far side?
No.
Yeah. That's actually on the neighbor's property. The way it's configured.
Doing a wood bulkhead.
No, I think it's a vinyl.
It's, wow.
It's vinyl? What, what am I?
James, what is?
Yes, I see vinyl something.
Vinyl, yeah, vinyl sheet.
Vinyl sheet.
You should go, go up a little bit.
It's right here, Scott. Here's the. I mean, it's, it's tiny.
Oh, my God.
Thought we were going to outlaw that.
I was just at the eye doctor.
Aye, aye.
I'm trying to run her sheet piling adjacent area. Navy bulkhead. Vinyl sheet piling.
This one's a little bit more clear.
I know. What, what is?
What is?
What, what is? Oh, my goodness.
And they have a, you know, they're talking about a floating dock, right?
Yeah, and that doesn't look like it has enough.
Water.
Water depth.
But it's not even on the character of work in the, in the, right?
Yeah, they don't have the dimensions on it. They do reference it. They said a new fixed dock, which leads to aluminum ramp and floating dock.
Yeah, but.
So they need a new cover sheet right there.
They need a new cover sheet for sure.
Need a new cover sheet.
Fixed the plan if there's not enough water.
They need to submit. Pathology, pathology of the.
I got a bunch of concrete work going on here too, concrete ballast. Did something on those plans say wood decking?
Yes.
Where's that? Where's that? I thought I saw that. Can you show me where that is?
Walkway maybe.
Is that on these plans? I thought I saw wood decking somewhere. Where's that?
Good luck with this.
Yeah, top decking has to be through flow or compatible open grate decking allowing.
I thought I saw something in it that said wood somewhere on it.
It says 76 feet of timber dock.
Yeah, but it's not on the character and dimensions or description of the work. It's, it's like the bulkhead at 53 Pond, Far Pond will be in Southampton will be placed in kind. And it doesn't have any of the.
Timber cap elevation.
The cap of the bulkhead.
I see grass. I see 16 by 16 concrete ballast for the tie rods.
The dead man, yeah.
Dead man.
Yeah. I see timber piles. This is really tiny.
Yes.
We can, we can ask them to get a better set of plans for this.
Well, I mean, I, you know.
You know what? We don't want to make a mistake.
All materials dropped to hardwood or untreated. No treated wood permissible.
And there's no buffer as well.
They're showing, they're just showing grass here, right?
So new plan, new cover sheet, show the dimensions, show the buffer.
Yep, the water depth, the pathology of the water.
This is like, yeah, the land row we've got, so we can read it.
Is any coverage with, on this property from the conservation board?
No, it's.
Here the depth of the water. This is where.
Depth of the water. This is what's currently there, Scott. You want to see the wetlands. Here's the rest of the photos. See, there's all wetlands in front of you.
They go past two and a half feet here.
Give it.
To go out to another two and a half feet, so.
But I don't think there's two and a half feet of water in that pond at low tide. In fact, I can almost. Vouch for that.
These are the older plans, though. The newer plans don't have this on here.
We need, do we need clarification?
I would say so.
We need clarification.
Yes. This is why it's hard not having a consultant to talk to back and forth here.
Well. I need an doctor to read.
No, it's very difficult.
All right, well, we'll contact them. Or put it on hold.
Put it on hold.
All right. Trustee Walker.
Okay. I have. Technically, it's, all four of these are the same basic, but Flying Point Sands LLC, 1131 Flying Point Road Watermill. First Coastal Corporation.
I'm just here to present.
Would you like to come up to? So these are plans for beach restoration, dune restoration. And. Aram, if you want to describe the project or projects or if you want to deal with it, whether it's individually or.
Yeah, I mean, it's a base, bit of a holistic thing going on here, right?
Yes.
Yeah. For the record, Aram Turchunian, First Coastal Corporation, West Hampton Beach, on behalf of the applicants. So we have a, you know, very standard, run-of-the-mill dune restoration project. This area was impacted by erosion in the 2018 timeframe. And there's been good recovery of the beach itself. However, the dune, as they are apt to do, take much longer periods of time to recover. You can see how it's scalloped out in this section where James is showing it right now. And the object is merely to bring the dune in line with what is on either side. So you can see the beach itself is, is reasonably healthy, so provides a good plan form on pond which to set the dune. Keeping it far enough away from the waves that it doesn't get impacted except for in extreme events. All of these properties have gotten permits from the trustees at least twice in the, in the last decade to do this type of work. And so we would request that you advance this forward for a permit.
Yeah, I, I agree with, with Aaron. Now, back to that, go back to that prior screen there. You have, you have a gap there. Are you representing the, that gap in the tooth there?
Yes. The, the cap in the tooth. Very good. Yes, we are representing them. We have recently, we have been in touch with them continuously. They have recently advised us, as in within the last 24 hours, that they do wish to participate in this, but we need to put together our paperwork for you to consider.
Could you do that? That would be, because that way it'll be better for you.
It'd be better for everybody. Yes.
But I would suggest that we move these forward.
Absolutely. Let's move these forward and then.
Interim and then if you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work post haste to get the other one.
It's an important project. You could clearly see it. I think the board recognizes it, Aram, so if you could get that paperwork in, that would be great.
So I would like to advance this.
Advance it.
And. Should we go through each one, I guess? Caroline Hirsch, 1151 Flying Point Road Watermill. Aram Turchunian.
This project.
For the. Oh, okay, so.
You can just read the addresses.
1151 Flying Point Road. CPH LLC, 1175 Flying Point Road and Leonard Holzer, 1177 Flying Point Road. All are identical to the first one that we discussed. So clean sand to restore the dune, planting beach grass and installing sand fence along the seawertow of the restored dune. So I would like to recommend that we advance 1151, 1175 and 1177 Flying Point Road.
Okay, Carl.
I agree.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have trustee Parrish.
Yes, we have the Living Shoreline proposal, 674 through 696 Dune Road in West Hampton.
Yes, sir.
He asked me to do it apart so I could see.
Yeah.
You can't see it?
No.
I have it standing at party and you're not going to see it.
No. Yeah, I don't think Billy Mack can reach much higher.
We can only go so high, you know.
That's better.
I, I have it on here.
Yeah, I resemble that. I resemble that.
I have it on the screen. I could show it on the screen, so. Don't go too crazy over there.
Just put it on the screen.
Yeah, put it on a screen. We'll put it on a screen. All right, you're good, you're good.
They're doing a good job.
All right.
Make them work for the money.
They've got a paper, per peg.
Give us, give us 30 seconds here. Thank you. Just, you know, for our old school paper.
We could have saved the forest, Aram.
It's already printed.
I think we have someone on Zoom waiting.
We do? Who's on Zoom?
D O S Hannah.
The D O S.
Hannah Wilson.
Somebody from the state? Of New York, D E C?
No D E C.
No D E C?
I got an email saying that they would not be joining.
All right, so thank you for your patience. I appreciate it. And.
Who was going to give us a report?
New York State, D E C.
Do we have that?
Stephanie Larkin from the D E C indicated she was going to give a report. She sent an email this morning that reads.
Got someone there, Charles?
Isn't that Hannah from the Department of State?
Yes, Hannah. Is there somebody else, Charles? That's it. Hi, Hannah.
No one else.
No one else. Okay.
Thank you. For the record, Aram Turchunian, First Coastal Corporation, West Hampton Beach, New York, on behalf of the applicants. I come before you today to review the monitoring report that we submitted last week for the project 612 to 628 Dune Road in West Hampton that the board wanted to get a review of as they considered this follow-on project of 12 homes. So this is eight homes that was, we originally started this project in 2018, believe it or not, and it was constructed in 2021 and 2022. I have handed out to you a small set of what you see on the wall. The only difference between what James has on the screen and what's on the wall and in your packet is page number six, which I added very late on Friday. And so I will just walk you through these very quickly. You have it in front of you. And you have also a cover letter that I, I sent summarizing the findings of the, of this project performance. So just for reference. We have our location map on Ridges Bay. You can see it's, it's in between two bulkheads here on the east and here on the west. And it's the easternmost eight properties right here. So prior to our, our project, this is a photo taken in June of 2018. You can see that there is a lot of erosion on the shoreline. You can see right here, there's actually, we had placed some fill right after some storms that were in March of 2018. And that's kind of what spurred this whole project. So what I did was, now, all of these photographs come from a company called Nirmap, which does quarterly high definition, high resolution aerial photography. And these are ortho photos that are taken by that company, which we obtained. I then, here I have an after project. You can see easily the comparison, how we have the segmented breakwaters that don't appear in the first one. But what I did was I superimposed on the post project, the mean high water line from 2018. 2018 and the mean-high waterline from post-project. And what you can see, and it's probably easier to see in the package in front of you, is that in all cases, the mean-high waterline is either coincident with or slightly landward of the 2018 line. The 2022 line is coincident or landward of. And that was one of the concerns, it was brought up by the D O S, it's been brought up by this board. The object here is not to gain land, the object is to stabilize the shoreline. So, this is a good illustration that that goal has been achieved. We have stabilized the shoreline without changing the boundary line. You know, here on the next photo, what we did was, part of our monitoring was to measure distances from a fixed point on each property to certain points in the project area, including the crest of the dune, the mean-high waterline, the mean-low waterline, and the rock sill itself. So, we've measured all that, we've placed it all here onto the, onto the original photo. If the copy is in the record, it shows you here, these are the fixed points, we measure from the fixed point of these four items, that was always required by the monitoring report. Here is just some photographs that are showing you the post-project condition, and as you can see, we have identified the beach grass and the alterniflora that was planted, as well as the sandy beach. And then, in this photograph, this series of photographs over here, what we did was, we wanted to illustrate the type of habitat that we've actually created here. So, what we have, if you go to our, if you go to our summary letter, what you'll see is that our findings from this is that the, that the location of the high-water line has not been improved, if you will. The shoreline has been effectively stabilized, and we have actually created new habitat. So, starting on the upper left, I'm showing you a picture of the rock breakwaters, and you can see on there how the algae is already growing on there within a year, and in fact, we're having barnacles, which are macrobenthic organisms, growing on there as well. So, we've already, we've established this rocky intertidal habitat, and nature has come along and is colonizing it. If you look down to the bottom left, you can see that we have macrobenthic fauna, AKA seaweed, growing right there in the gap between the breakwaters. If we go up to the second row from the left, you can see where all the seaweed has collected along the shoreline, that's perfect feeding habitat for shorebirds. Continuing across the top, we see the shorebirds are feeding in that intertidal area, continue across the top to the far right now, and those two photographs on the far right show go close-ups of the birds feeding in that intertidal habitat area. So, we've created a stable intertidal habitat, and the organism, the wildlife is taking advantage of it. If you go to the middle, two sets of photographs, in the center left, there's a tiny little juvenile crab in there. Well, that's exactly what we want to see crawling into the crevices created by the rock breakwater. If you look to the right of that photo, the right center, you'll see a horseshoe crab. Horseshoe crabs are coming in, they are breeding in this area and laying their eggs. And then, center-left bottom, there's actually a little school of baitfish that are coming right into that rocky intertidal and sandy habitat area. So, by all measures, this project is performing precisely the way that we wanted it to. Stabilized shoreline, no change in boundary, habitat created, and, you know, but we do have, we do have a couple of things we need to work on. We were asked under the monitoring plan to do what we call adaptive management. An adaptive management is what went well and what didn't go well. Well, two things didn't go well. The Spartana alterniflora that we clearly planted was consumed by geese. So, we're gonna have to replant that, and we're gonna have to do goose protection. Okay, that's on the list, we'll get it done. Second thing is, we had an exceptionally dry summer, so if you look at the photographs of the beach grass, you can see that the stuff that we planted last year in season did incredibly well, and everything that we planted this year in season just got ruined out by the drought. So, fine, so we replant that. So, our adaptive management going forward is replant the alterniflora, replant the beach grass, but basically, the foundation of this project is outstanding. And that is our annual report for your information. Happy to answer any questions that you may have about that. And I would just close by saying, what we propose to do on the next project is, in fact, the same thing. We're gonna do the same thing. We've learned a couple, we've learned one important ratio, and that is the ratio between the gap and the distance between the rock core dune and the sill. And that ratio needs to be .8. What we found was, we had a range of .6 to .8, and the .6 ratio, we were finding that the crescent-shaped beach that we are creating is eating into the toe of the rock core dune. And with the, with the sections of the project that had a .8, which are these guys right here, we did not see that. So, we're gonna modify the plan to reflect that point. In fact, our new plan reflects the .8, the plan that you have right now already reflects that, because the distance between the rock core and the, and the sills, in this case, was mostly less than 30 feet, and in the case before you, I think, is 35 or 40 feet, which meets the .8 ratio.
So, you're gonna, you're gonna spread it out?
Spread it out, just a little bit, it's, you know...
See, that, that was what I thought when you and I met on site back, I don't know, a few months ago. I agree, I think that is the right move.
Yeah, well, you know, adaptive management, gotta learn.
Yeah, it looked to me like it needed to spread out a little bit more. Yeah, that's good, Aram.
Thank you very much for this presentation, it was well done, and as you said, this is adaptive management in the works, right? We're figuring it out as we go along, and the fact that you've been able to put together many properties that are contiguous, not only in this scenario, but in the other one that's coming before the board, will benefit greatly this whole area. So, thank you for your work on that, and also in looking to nature-based solutions.
Thank you.
Our question, are the other regulatory authorities okay with you spreading out a little bit more?
Well, that's the, that's the plan that we submitted, which is currently under review.
Okay.
I won't speak for them, but, you know, Hannah's online, and I know she had not raised that concern. The D E C, in our last meeting, asked if we could move the rock core back a little, and that was one of the things that prompted me to look into the ratio, as I just described, and we're good with what we have right now.
When you say move it back, you mean pinch it closer to the shoreline, or...
No, to move the rock core dune landward, no, there's, to increase the separation between the sill and the dune by moving the dune. And I said we would look at that, and when I examined that, I realized we were making the ratio now, so there really isn't a need to do that. And I don't know what her motivation in saying it is, but I would think that seeing that some of these areas, like right in here and here, were getting erosion into the toe of the dune, I assume that that's why she was asking me if we could spread it out.
I recall D E C saying that they were gonna do an inspection themselves in a report, a monitoring report.
Yeah, they, they, I was contacted by Stephanie Larkin late last week, she said something about Wednesday, this coming Wednesday.
So, there'll be another report coming from them?
She's, yeah, she said she was gonna do a field report. I don't know what that consists of, but I offered to meet her at the site and walk her through, and I'll definitely follow up on that.
When will you plant?
Planting is April.
And then, hope for a little more rain?
For some rain and some cool weather. And we'll do some, we'll do some geese protection, which unfortunately, looks like, looks like Christmas, because you have to, you have to use fishing line and foil to keep them out. But that will be only for the first season to, so that the grass can get rooted.
Trustee Parish?
Mr. Warner, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I'm looking at this project. I mean, living on Schinacock Bay, there's been a natural occurring, how would you say, you know, this stabilization of the shoreline. Over the years, the grass has built up, there's rocky outcroppings, and it's become, you know, very successful just on its own. But us permitting these on a larger scale, I mean, I'm looking at the, you know, basically from Cup Squawk Beach to the West Bay Bridge, I mean, there will be, could be 40, 50, or maybe 100 properties that we may be looking at this project. I really like it, you know, your report to be given to our board, and so that I could, so that we can forward it to Rob Young. I'd like to see a coastal geologist of his scale take a look at it, make some recommendations, or maybe not make recommendations, because if this is something that we're gonna be permitting in lieu of a bulkhead and, you know, standard rock revetments, and it's gonna be on our underwater lands, I want as many people to have comments on this and have eyes on it to make the project, you know, it seems successful now, but I really want to see, moving forward with, you know, coast, you know, the coast getting inundated with, you know, sea level rise, which is a reality, and, you know, and global warming and all of that stuff. I mean, I want to make sure that what we do here is going to basically stand the test of time. I don't know what the rest of the board feels, but I think, you know, he's been very helpful in giving us, you know, walkthroughs on Me Cox Beach, all along the Barrier Beach, from, you know, basically, West Hampton to East Hampton, and so he's been giving us some good information, and it'd be a fresh set of eyes from, from my standpoint, my standpoint of looking at this project. And like I said, I want it to be successful, because, you know, I was probably one of the people that encouraged you to do this because of the few areas in Schinacock, so I want to make it as successful as possible.
That would be fine if we were to have Dr. Young. I think, though, we have to wait for D E C anyway.
Yeah.
Granted, it's only a few days, but I'm sure that Dr. Young would be able to accommodate us by taking a look at this.
Right, I think that, you know, trustee Warner is correct, though, it's something that could, you know, take off, it's a problematic area, and I can see this expanding, so you want to make sure you, you know, you do it right, that you're going in the right direction, so I'm not opposed to that, but I'm interested to hear what the D E C has to say. But I think you did a great presentation, and I think we're going in the right direction.
Yeah, and there is, there's, the Schinacock Nation has done the living shoreline down there with the help of Sandy Money with Cornell, which is the biggest living shoreline in New York State, and we also have done a project by Tanner's Neck with the Coal Environmental, another living shoreline over there. So, I really see this as something, a way of the future to sustain beaches and meadows, and to still work with sea level rise as, you know, and it's, I think it's a good...
You're protecting private property and the environment at the same time, you're trying to, again, strike that balance, and that's what you're trying to do, and adaptive, you know, kind of planning here, where you're, you're making adjustments, and I think the more people that have eyes on it, that have an expertise in it, the better project that we're gonna get. So, curious to see what the state, D E C has to say. And I'm not opposed to you contacting Dr. Young.
Okay.
I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with it, but I think we have to make sure his availability is sooner rather than later.
Yes.
He's gonna need a resolution authorization to expand it, too.
I believe we have a retainer with Dr. Young.
I know we had one, is it still in there?
It might be, it might be updated.
All right, so, let's, we'll, we'll deal with that.
May I comment? Thank you. First of all, thanks for listening, and thanks for the thoughtful comments. I agree with review, I mean, I believe the facts are the facts, and independent review will confirm the facts. My concern is time, okay? So, as, I, I told you that we started that project in 2018, and we finished it in 2022, okay? I'd rather not do that with this project. So, I know Rob Young very well. In fact, amazingly enough, if you follow Rob Young, he recently posted on LinkedIn that he found the West Hampton Dunes Beach Restoration Project to be excellent, so... I'm not worried.
I'm not worried, I just, I want to encourage the best project possible.
I just want, I just, you know, time is ticking.
Sure.
And my project is losing three feet a year, and I'd rather not wait years to get to it.
We still don't have the state, right? We still need the state in New York.
Well, you don't need the state, the state is gonna operate on their own schedule. In fact, they're gonna force me to do a public, probably to do a public notice, which I've been asking them to give to me for several months now. The Army Corps has already completed their public notice, they're ready to go, are waiting on, on D O S, and D O S is waiting on your decision. So, I don't want to be in a catch-22, where I can't move the project forward because everybody is waiting for somebody else.
Well, if you can give us, you know, the plans that you have given us, the narrative that you have just read us...
Everything is, has been sent to James, I'll send him the updated sheet six, and you'll, you'll have everything.
We could send it off, and we could get this to work ASAP, okay?
Okay.
And you could give a call to just be young also.
On behalf of the call, Rob.
Yep.
Put this on top of his list.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Thank you for the presentation, Aram.
Okay. Yes.
Yes.
What else have you got there, trustee Parish?
We have 541 Main Street, Paula Fiedler, Queok, also First Coastal.
Thank you, trustee Parish, on behalf of the applicant, Aram Turchunian, First Coastal Corporation, West Hampton Beach, New York. This is a pretty straightforward vanilla bulkhead restoration project on Quantuck Bay. I don't have a lot to say about it, you know, these are, this is a pre-existing bulkhead, it's been there a long time, it needs to be replaced, we're gonna replace it with vinyl, we'll be using untreated wood, and I would ask that you advance this to the...
This was on once before, wasn't it? Oh, then, was it withdrawn?
It, I...
Or put on hold? Was put on hold?
New purchase.
New purchase, yeah.
Right.
This is the village of Quok?
No.
No, it's in Queok.
Quok, Queok.
And you have, you have this, the engineer's camp plans in the file?
And it's all non-treated, where are you?
Because I have them right here.
Yeah, no, I don't have that.
So, there's a, just, there's a boat slip in there that's going to be... Aram, there's a boat, is there one boat slip or two?
There's a boathouse and a boat slip.
Okay, and they're gonna be just bulkheaded around, like in kind and place?
Yeah, we're just gonna follow the existing line of the...
You're increasing the elevation.
Yes. So, I don't know if, if the board got the email last week from the D E C, but it was good news for myself and my fellow consultants. The, the, D E C has issued a general permit for bulkhead reconstruction, and, and it applies throughout Region One, which is us, Nassau and Suffolk, and it marries up with the Army Corps of Engineers Nationwide Permit for Bulkhead Reconstruction. And it automatically provides for a, it doesn't require in kind, doesn't require in place, it actually says you can go eight inches out, we don't, we're not, we're doing in kind and place, and it automatically gives an 18-inch increase in...
Up to 18-inch or 18-inch?
Says 18. I, I don't have instant recall on what it said, I just read 18.
We'll have to take a look at that, yeah.
I don't believe we've gotten that.
Not more than seven minutes ago, trustee Warner said, "Everybody knows sea level's a reality." New York State has published their mid-level Long Island sea level rise for 2050 at 16 inches. It would be, dare I say, irresponsible of any agency not to give 18 inches.
It all depends on the location and the neighbors and the problem.
No, respectfully, it doesn't. Respectfully, it relies on the physical forces of sea level rise. It doesn't require, it doesn't, we're not, you know, the neighbor also needs to protect themselves. We should not force someone to be damaged by sea level rise because the neighbor doesn't choose us not to. choose us not to.
I, I agree to disagree with you on that.
Okay, that's good.
Well, I mean, you got to look at the topography of the actual site, you know, if you're going to have a big, you know, if you're going to have water coming around. I mean, I, I hear what you're saying in your general terms.
Eventually, everybody's going to raise eighteen inches. They have to.
Well, but I guess if you have an unprotected property at the end, and you go up eighteen, and the water comes up through this unprotected property and then around the backside.
That is not, that is not a reason for this board to, to, to impose a lesser protection that is obvious on the facts.
But is it, is it really going to be a protection if, if the, if the bay is able to come up around the side of the property and then pool on the landward side of the bulkhead?
You're predicting all of this.
What's that?
You're predicting all that, you know, I, I simply don't have a response.
No, but, no, but just, just from a common sense perspective to what he was saying. If you have, if you have a, an end of a bulkhead where it stops and just returns in, and then you have just vacant meadow, vacant wetland, no bulkhead, right? And then we get a surge, or you get water coming up, it's going to hit that bulkhead. The water's going to come up around the backside of that, right?
And people are going to, are going to fill their, they're going to raise their property to protect themselves.
Well, that's, well, there you go. It's not just the bulkhead, it's got to be the entire topography.
Can I interrupt you? I think this is not the place to disagree or agree on this.
Well, then what is the place? Because we're running into this all the time now.
Well, maybe we should have a public hearing on what we should use, what material we should reuse in that area and.
In that area?
And, and the height.
Okay. Usually you guys are a little more out front than the other agencies. Right now, you're behind them. Both the federal and the state government have recognized this as something that is necessary. Well, they're fine, I'm fine, whatever.
But stay focused on the application.
Yes, stay focused on that.
Well, yeah, I mean, well, but, but.
But it's always been that they would give automatically up to eighteen inches, and then they would leave it to the other regulatory authorities to take a closer look, I think, at the site-specific conditions and set a, you know, an elevation that seems to make sense. I'm not arguing the point about raising bulkheads when it is appropriate, but when you have a site-specific situation that's going on, that may create some adverse impact to the adjoining properties for us to not look at that, may, we may, you know, have an issue there. And I think you still, between now and 2050 is a, is a long time, and a lot can happen between now and then. So you still have to take a look at these things, you know? No one's arguing the point of what they're saying, it's just we still have to be cognizant of what we're allowing on trust property, and I don't think it's responsible to totally not pay attention to adjoining land masses and property owners and other considerations. Not saying we're not going to do that, but we still need to, I think, address it and look at it.
Aaron, you're quite well acquainted with, with the FIMP and the rules and regulations and movement forward. How many homes are, approximate percentage are being asked to elevate?
Well, so FIMP, Fire Island to Montauk Point Plan, has about a billion dollars to elevate homes throughout the South Shore. There are forty-five hundred homes in total. It's a completely voluntary program. There is no obligation for anybody to do anything. I don't know the exact number, but there are several hundred within the town of Southampton that are eligible or were eligible when they completed their study. The bulk of them are in the East Quogue and Hampton Bays.
Right. So taking that into consideration, it's confusing to me if you're going to elevate your home, why you'd also need to elevate your bulkhead if you're.
Because you're protecting against different things.
Well, yes and no.
No, yes. Absolutely, yes.
Yes and no. Because if you're, if you still have access to your property, to your home, could you not have a lower bulkhead that would protect the land, but also perhaps even looking at, I don't know, some, sometimes I think it almost should be low sill in some of these, so that it's allowed to flood going forward rather than the, the opposite.
I, I would respectfully disagree that, that, that there's any different, that elevating your home and elevating your bulkhead are the same thing. They're not. One is designed to protect the land from frequent flooding, not from one-hundred-year storms. They're designed for completely different things.
Right, I understand that. But when you're saying generally you're protecting your property, are you speaking about your home or are you speaking about the land?
I'm speaking about the land. I'm speaking about the frequent flooding of land caused by frequent storms. That's, that's what a bulkhead is intended for. If it was intended to protect against a hundred-year storm, it'd have to be twelve feet high.
Yeah, I'll bet you're off when you get the big storm.
But, all right, so you want to focus on this application. Will you please advance it?
Anything else?
Are you talking about the buffer language on the, on the application?
What, he asked for eight inches?
What increase?
Yeah, what, what do you got, eight-inch increase?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. And also, have we received that?
So what's the adjoining properties?
It doesn't show on here. At least I can't see it. The adjoining properties, Aaron?
Do you know where we stand? And also, have we received that communique from DEC? I don't believe I've seen it.
No, I don't think so.
Well, yeah, we, we could have a conversation with the state.
No, no, that's outside of, yeah.
Here's what happens, is everybody starts painting with a wide brush. They don't take it into consideration in site specifics nor what's going on, say, in the township, and it creates issues. So we need to get some clarification on that. But let's stay focused on your application.
So what's the difference?
What do you got over here? What do you?
Trying to figure out.
I'm sorry, I, I gave my last copy to James, who gave it to Jessica, so I can't look at it.
What do you have in your, in, right there? What do you got there?
What are you looking for?
I want to see what the adjoining properties look like.
I don't know. It shows it on, on here, doesn't it?
No, it doesn't show it on there.
Sometimes it'll show it on the corner of the survey.
Jess, Aaron gave you his last copy. Can you, can you lend it back to him?
Can I see that?
Oh, this one, yes.
Let me check this out, what do the pictures look like?
Did you put the pictures up, James?
It is, but. Then what's going to happen?
All I can, all I can do is, is show you a picture of what it, what the adjoining property looks like.
So it's six, those are four, six by sixes, right? Like, there's the difference.
Yeah.
So six inches. And you're asked, it's a difference of six inches between the subject property and the property to the.
North.
North. Do you have an idea of the property to the south?
There's two six by sixes there. I do not.
We can hold it over till you find out the height difference.
It's really hard to tell.
Yeah. Because there's.
Oh, yeah, see that?
There's wood on top of.
So that's, that's like, these sixes. Twelve, so.
Which bulkhead are they going to?
This one here?
Yeah. The one, the old one's going to be replaced.
So it can go up to the new one.
And that's going to be pretty close. It says twelve, it's pretty close to what you're asking for, right?
It's not a standard. This is completely arbitrary.
What's arbitrary?
Doing what your neighbor does.
No, we're not, we're not saying we're going to do what the neighbor does. We're trying to figure out where the eighteen inches ends up on what the neighbor, on, on what it does to the neighbor's property.
What it's presently there. What do you do with the boathouse? You going to raise the boathouse eighteen inches, too?
Yes, we have to, yeah.
So you, do you have to go to a bone permit for that?
I don't know. Did you, did you go down here and look at this? No, so maybe you need to get, you need to get an eyeball on it.
Is this the Village of West Hampton Beach or?
That's in Cuyahoga.
Cuyahoga.
Why don't we go and do an inspection of it?
Pretty close. It's pretty close. Looks like with the two sixes, twelve, it's got a little more, he's going to be very, very close to just be a little bit more than the neighbor, right? You'd be a little higher than the neighbor? You'd be about that much over the neighbor with this one? Yeah, just by looking at that, you're, you'll be about four inches over the neighbor.
So raise the boathouse eighteen inches.
I don't know what's on the other side, you know what I mean?
I'm just trying to picture what it's going to look like around the neighborhood there with eighteen inches higher with this boathouse. Pretty large boathouse. Is it going to cut into anybody's view shed? How's it going to change the aesthetics in the neighborhood? I mean, a bulkhead is, it looks like it's a creosote bulkhead. I mean, it's been there for probably.
It's amazing.
I'm going to say it's probably been there for forty years, so I guess when it was placed in, it was probably eighteen inches above what it was supposed to be, and then now here we are, years later, arguing again. But sea level rise, I mean, it's going to dictate some elevation change. Now, this property, it's pretty flat, so by raising the bulkhead up eighteen inches, are you going to pitch, putting filler, are you going to pitch all the water back on the property?
It'll pitch, yeah, well, rainwater, yeah.
It won't, so it won't drain, like, naturally drain that well?
Well, it's pretty sandy. That soil is pretty sandy there.
I'd like to walk it.
Yeah, well, then we'll, we'll hold it, we'll walk it, let me see.
Oh, yeah.
You can see from the aerial photo, there's, it's, there's dense beach grass and a, and a conservation board imposed buffer, and we will put the language into the cover sheet that James identified.
The one question is, that environment that's there now, by elevating it eighteen inches, is it going to completely change that environment? Get rid of the grasses there? Are the, are they marsh grasses? Are they just?
Oh, it's all, it's all beach grass. It's all Cape American.
So basically, the elevation change isn't really going to make much difference in the environment.
Shouldn't have any, any change on that.
Then we hold it over till the next meeting and we'll do a walkthrough.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah.
How many times they can get the heights difference?
Yeah, it doesn't look like it's that much different between them.
If you, if you would like me to be there, send me a text or an email or a phone call, and I'd be happy to show up.
Yeah, great.
All right, what else do you have?
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
We have one more.
Seven eighty-seven Montauk Highway, also Cuyahoga.
Seven eighty-seven Montauk Highway, Patrick A. Burke. Because we didn't get that letter. Just wanted you to say.
We reviewed this last time, and the only thing that we were lacking was the engineer stamp, and those, those, that material's been submitted.
We've actually had a discussion regarding the.
Please.
Conservation Board's leather. Regarding the moving of the dock to a center or southerly location.
Their recommendation.
So the advisory letter from the Conservation Board, the recommendation was to center, was to center the dock on the property rather than.
While the Conservation Board does not object to the construction of a catwalk and dock on the property, the catwalk slash dock should be constructed, should be constructed in the central or southerly portion of the parcel, as these options would offer the most direct route of water. Route to the water, route to the water.
Unless disturbance.
Unless, yeah.
So where would that be on the?
James, can you put the hydro up?
Yeah, so we can see where that's going to be.
And as far as placement of the dock bill, it's no different in the water depth, so.
Okay.
That's not going to be the determining factor.
Right. No, I see that. Yeah, I see that. So that's okay.
Yes.
You're right, Ed.
That's okay. Yeah, that looks the same. What do you want to do? Move it?
Well, we spoke about moving it.
Move it.
I don't want to move it. I don't, I don't even understand the reasoning. Most direct route to the water. I'm looking at this, the, the wetlands line is pretty consistent along the property, along the northern, the central part of the property. It's the same distance. And on the southern portion of the property, we'd have to cross more wetlands. The reasoning makes no sense to me.
Well, to the Environment Division, it does. They're asking.
No, but they're words. Look at the words on the paper. It says it offers a more direct route to the water.
So why don't we just?
It doesn't.
Why don't we just wait, and then we, Billy goes.
No, I don't.
But the point is, the point. I, I know you don't, I know, I know, I know you don't want to wait, but the reality is that we're stepping into the shoes of the jurisdiction of the other board.
No, we're not.
What do you mean?
This, the Conservation Board has no jurisdiction over this matter.
They most certainly do.
How?
It's above mean high water.
It's a, it's a walkway to the water connected to a dock that has always been the jurisdiction of this board.
Yes, but now our practice is to ask for advisory.
The board has changed the practice?
No, no.
The bottom, the bottom line is, is that if we're going to have a successful, if we're going to be successful in whatever it is that we're doing for water quality and the, and the environment, streamlining things, boards having respect for each other's considerations, we're stepping into their shoes. It, it's not an unreasonable request.
It is completely unreasonable, and, and what you're doing is not streamlining the process. You're making it much more difficult, and, and what you're doing is disrespecting the property owner who has a right to do this, who has complied with all your rules. And when you look at the letter from the Conservation Board, it says a more direct route to the water. That's their reasoning. It is, the facts belie that statement, and this board can just look at it and see it.
But how far landward from the mean high watermark is the structure?
The building?
No. The structure that we're permitting.
It's, whether it's in the north or the central part, it's the same. Look at the diagram.
No, no, that's not the, no, no, that's not what I'm asking. I mean, how far landward?
The length of the catwalk from mean high water to its termination.
Landward.
Approximately, if you show the cross-section. Because the alternative, Aaron, for us would be for us to permit from mean high water seaward, and then for you to go to the Conservation Board and request the catwalk.
And that's more streamlined?
No, we're trying to, we're trying to.
No, but the Conservation, does, does the Conservation Board have veto authority over this board?
No.
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 Because that's what I hear. That's what I'm hearing right now.
No. We're attempting to, as I stated last time when this came up, we're attempting to make this process be more seamless for the applicants by requesting an advisory letter from the Conservation Board. And you may, you may disagree, Aaron, but we're attempting to work with you.
I definitely disagree, okay? And I appreciate asking for an advisory opinion. It's been given to you. Advisory opinions are exactly that. They are advisory, they're not obligatory. The facts, the fact, the words used by the board say the reason for moving this is it is a quote, more direct route to the water. But the facts clearly show that is not the case. If it's in the north or central section, it is identical, and if it's in the southern section, it's actually farther.
Right.
Well, make it, make it short and easy with the answers. We'll give it up to the, the one mark.
That's not short and easy. Now, you're punishing my client because they want to exercise their reparian rights and saying, now go to the southern ward and go to that process. That's not short and easy. Now, you're punishing my client because they want to exercise their reparian rights and saying, now go to the southern ward and go to that process.
Aram, you're disrespecting me, you just interrupted me, okay? Now, maybe we should just
Forget this and go to a public hearing on this. What do you think, Ann? Then we really can discuss it.
You know, it Yeah.
We have to respect the Conservation Board like Ann says and the other board members. And maybe we should clarify what they say the more direct right, route is. Like what they said in the letter, what you interrupted me when I was trying to say.
I apologize.
I think it's pretty, pretty clear that there are many examples that you will see up and down the waterfront where there are considerations from many different regulatory authorities, jurisdictions and boards where there is no communication and there's no respect for the considerations. And I think that when there are advisory concerns, when there are regulations that the boards, the authorities, the regulatory authorities, the jurisdictions can work together, I think you get a better result for the environment, a better result for the public, you get a more streamlined approach for the applicants because you can, you can address everybody's concerns right out of the gate. Now, I understand that your client doesn't want it in the center, wants it over here. But the reality is that for the sake of the environment, for the sake of the township and the people that live here, we're trying to play nice in the sandbox, so to speak, and listen to the concerns. And if something is egregiously wrong, then obviously we're, we're not gonna go there. But when you have something that appears to be reasonable from a request standpoint, I think to just disregard it and poke him in the eye, I, I don't see that as a good strategy. Especially when you know that you have to work with people over a longer period of time, over the course of many applications and that the decisions that you make have effects moving well beyond that day. And I think that with what's going on here is that with the way we view it, yes, in the past, we, we will permit the whole thing. But so that we don't have these misunderstandings and we don't have these problems that have arisen, if you ask for a simple advisory and you can work that out, it streamlines it for you, it streamlines it for your client, it respects the considerations of the other board and at the end of the day, I think you get a better project. Okay, that's the rationale. It's not that one's trumping the other. It's not, it's about having respect. It's about dancing without stepping on each other's toes and getting it done. That's all we're trying to do, Aram. Not get you upset, your client upset, not the Conservation Board upset, not the town upset, not the members upset. Trying to get a good product in a very timely fashion, taking it to consideration hall. That's all.
Mr. President, I have not been on site personally. I'd like you to, like us to hold this application so I can do a site visit personally. Arguing back and forth is getting us no ways here. I think if we go on site and physically are there, we can get a good perspective of what is being said.
I agree.
That's wonderful. I'd love to have you on site, but I must respond to your comments, Mr. President. From my perspective, there, the Conservation Board's letter provides no reasoning whatsoever that is credible for relocating the dock. The language it uses is in order to create a more direct route to the water. It is a demonstrable fact that in the central section, it does not, it is the same distance and in the, in the southern section, it is a greater distance. And to represent that because the Conservation Board wrote a letter requesting this, that automatically creates a benefit for the town of Southampton and all the other parties that you mentioned, including the environment, when the facts belie the statement. I think that is a situation where a reasonable person and or board says, thank you very much for your advisory, but since your rationale doesn't hold up, we'd like to proceed with what the applicant asked for. And as far as making it more simplified, from, from my perspective, you, your, this letter is being used as a cudgel against my applicant that either do what we say or we're gonna bifurcate your application and have you go get tortured by the Conservation Board.
Yeah, listen, you're entitled to your comments and I appreciate that, but I'm, I'm not gonna disrespect that chairman nor that board, you know? I, I, I have full respect
So, so there is a veto authority.
I have a full respect for the people that serve the Environment Division and their reasonable requests provided by the board and, you know, again.
So no matter what their opinion is, no matter that the facts don't support it, you're just gonna blindly follow their opinion?
That's not, that's not what this board is saying, asking.
That's, well, that's what the facts are saying.
That's not
So trusty
Read the letter.
Excuse me, if you had listened to what we said before, we were gonna go clarify this. But no, you jumped it down our face and wanna argue, okay?
I wanna make sure that my clients are represented, trustee Pell, because I, I was just told that my client's not acceding to this request is damaging the environment and the people of the town and I respectfully disagree based on the facts.
We say we wanted to clarify this information. I would like to know what they said, what they mean, okay?
I like
So
We're gonna walk the property.
We're gonna, we're gonna hold this
Yes.
and we'll do, several of us will do site visits and we'll ask for further clarification from the Conservation Board.
Yes.
And as always, I'd be happy to accompany
I'd like you to be there and show us that this is factually incorrect.
Maybe you want somebody from the Environment Division to be with you at that time as well?
All right, what else have you got?
Duck blinds.
Okay.
Duck blinds.
Thank you, Aram.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have your stuff here? You're welcome. I can't grab the bucket, I'm sorry. There you go. Agenda in there. Yeah, just throw the bucket on the extra chair there.
Maybe. You may want them for another
Actually, Joe, could you pull that chair off and put the bucket on it?
No, no, we have, we have these. You may want those for another
A lot of still costs.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't have to sign anything.
Thank you, Billy.
Okay, you have some waterfowl
Yes, we do.
at the location permits.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hi, Linnea.
How is everybody?
We're good. How are you?
A lot of waterfowl going on today. Um
I hear you're doing a very good job, by the way.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, it is duck season.
It's not easy.
No.
Lot of stressful hunters.
Yes, but we love to help them make sure that they get everything that they need and get their season ready for hunting. Um, so perfect, the first one we have up is for Scott's area. It's Leonard Nodoff, permit number seventy-nine. He would like to transfer his blind over to William E. Miller, Jr. When I sent it over to Rich and Al for the recommendation, they said everything looks good on our end pending trustee approval. Everything is Blue Book compliant.
Okay, go by the constables the blue book.
All right.
They're very, both of them are very well-respected hunters.
Good.
Actually hunted with one of them for many years. How many does William Miller have now?
That would be his second one, I believe.
Second one, so he's, he's it, okay. Thought he had one other.
All right, and our next one up is for Kevin J. Rusell and Randy Crack. It's permit number twenty-nine. So Kevin J. Rusell, he would like to remove himself from the blind. He is no longer a Southampton Town resident. Um, I sent everything over to Rich and he said everything looks good, Blue Book compliant.
Who's, so whose permit was it in?
Randy Crack.
Um, it is, it was, it's originally in Kevin J. Rusell's name, but it's co- permitted with Randy Crack.
So he's giving it to?
So he's fully transferring over his side back to Randy, yes.
Yeah. He's a very good hunter too.
Yes, he is.
Very respected.
Yeah, it's fine.
All right, that one's good.
You got trustee Pell?
Okay, for, um, for Pell, we have, starting off with Joseph Kirby, permit number two oh eight. He would like to transfer this duck blind over to Henry Kremberg and it be care of the North Sea Gun Club. Um, I sent everything over to Rich and Al. They said everything looks good. It's Blue Book compliant. So he's fully transferring the blind over to
Whoa, 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 Henry Kremberg care of the North Sea Gun Club.
Thank you.
So he's a representative, I believe, of the North Sea Gun Club?
So we, we're, so who's gonna be using this blind?
It's, it'd be, be North Sea Gun Club members who all live in the town.
So
We, we, we did this, we, we vented this with Joe. Joe, can we talk again?
I don't know why you're not
I think we need counsel on this one.
Yeah, he's gonna explain this, why we, why we could do it. So let's just skip over that.
He's in the laboratory.
Well, here he is. The man of the minute.
Yeah, this is a, I mean, normally we give it to an individual.
Yeah, we gotta watch this. This is one we may have to think about here for a minute.
This is the one we're talking about, North Sea Gun Club?
Oh, okay.
So explain how, why, why we're eligible to do it.
Or, or what, what are we doing here? Should we look at this for a minute relative to how we control this whole thing?
Do we have a list of the members of North Sea Gun Club?
Yeah, with Mark.
There's also, I just wanted to make you guys aware, the next blind that we are discussing is also going to be transferred into Henry Kremberg care of North Sea Gun Club.
He has two of them.
Yes, there's two that Joseph Kirby would like to transfer over.
So Joe, you wanna explain to how we can do it? We'd like the conversation about this back and forth.
Without creating some issue.
It has catches breath. I caught him off guard. You want us to skip and go and come back to that?
No, I, I just need a thirty seconds catch my breath because I just ran up the stairs, which I shouldn't have done. Um, the situation is that traditionally the gun club has had a duck blind or two, I believe, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. One member has been responsible for the upkeep, placement and stewardship or monitoring of it for the members of the gun club. He no longer wishes to do that.
That was Joe Kirby.
And since the gun club has traditionally had the, the, the duck blind, it's, it seems to make sense that this is a
So whose name was this, was it permitted in their name?
No.
No, it was permitted in Joseph Kirby's name.
So what are you saying? You're not, that's not, what you're saying is not what's on the big board, though.
What you have done is allowed the gun club to put it in the name of one member. Traditionally. I believe they have two, two actual blinds, so, so that being the case, as it was presented to me, Joseph Kirby doesn't wish to continue doing that on behalf of his fellow members.
Was, was the original, the original permit that's being transferred, Joseph Kirby Care of North Sea Gun Club, Inc., or was it Joseph Kirby?
Just Joseph Kirby. They've been doing the maintenance on it.
My understanding it was with the gun club, so.
But, yeah, but that's not what the paperwork says.
All right, well, I haven't seen the paperwork, so
I mean, I'm just asking, I'm trying to get to the, everything's about dot nine across the titties, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Exactly, because if something goes bad, how, how are we addressing that?
We were, we were addressing it, keeping it towards the gun club. They have the insurance policy for liability purposes. And they, we, we were looking for an organization that was going to be ongoing as opposed to a member. If somebody died very suddenly, then we're, we've got that into a state of flux as well. So that was my understanding was, is that the, the gun club was somehow going to be more prominent in terms of who had the permit.
What is traditionally going on here before we make a mistake and, you know? There's something up here.
All right.
Traditionally, and what sense?
Who it's been permitted to and, so it's always, um, hold on, I don't wanna speed out of terms, so hold on one second for me. So it's always, for Joseph Kirby, he has been the blind holder for both of these. It has only been permitted in his name.
Right, and then they, he lets the people use it, but it's one person directly responsible for it. Now, who's responsible?
The story as presented to me was that he was doing this on behalf of the club. Am I correct?
Okay, but that's not what that says, no?
Well, I'm telling you what
I
I can only tell you what I know, so.
We would permit a co-perity who's an individual, not an entity.
Yes.
Right.
So we need to
So it's almost like Harry Kremberg and as a committee and a co-perity is, is the entity, North Sea Gun Club.
Yes.
If we can do it that way, that would be fine.
That'd be fine.
The, the intent was to allow the gun club to be basically the one that would be responsible and in charge of the, of the, of the blind.
The trustees are in charge of the blind.
In terms of use, in terms of insurance.
Well, I, I get it, but we just gotta make sure that
Yeah.
I believe what's also causing a little bit of like back and forth is that, um, for Joseph Kirby, previously there was no mention of the North Sea Gun Club, sorry,
Right.
in any of his application, but when we received his transfer applications, Henry did write his full name and then care of North Sea Gun Club. So I think that's what's also just kind of
In care of doesn't mean they're
Yeah.
switching liability.
Right.
In care of means it's
It's a mailing address.
Mailing address.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Right, so
Which also wasn't presented during the conference, so.
So, okay, so this is going to, and I think we gotta be careful with this.
No, no, absolutely. This is, this is, the sto, the, the confer, the conversation that I had with trustee Pell and with the representative of the club, that was the intent of what they were trying to achieve. No permit application or renewal had been submitted. It was trying to find a procedural way to do it. Correct me if I'm wrong, so if we have to bring the paperwork into alignment with what it has to be, then clearly an in care of does not work. That's a mailing address. That doesn't, that doesn't
Right, so we need to
We need to hold it, we need to speak with the
We need to get this all good, so that is good for everybody, you know?
We need to get it right.
I could see permitting it, it transferred to Henry O. Kremberg, Strikeout Gun Club and, and this, that's the way it's historically been done.
Right, but we would still, I would still be a lot more comfortable seeing some sort of assumption of, or, or a recognition of responsibility, excuse me, in, in the part of the club.
Maybe we could just, um
Wouldn't that be, wouldn't that be with the owner of the blind and the club?
Catch Mark up to speed here. So Mark, what we're discussing is
We need to take a
this transfer from, there are two permits, two waterfall permits that are being proposed, transfers from an individual to
Oh, yeah, yeah, to a gun club, right.
Well, so the discussion is whether they are being transferred to a gun club or whether they're being transferred to an individual who
Represented at gun club.
Yeah, it's a little bit
I remember having this conversation once before. I, I believe technically the conclusion we reached was that the code says individuals only.
Yes.
So that groups could not apply and then have tons of people going.
Yeah.
So unless we amend the code technically, that's what it said.
So we need to look at this.
Who is Henry Kremberg in relation to the club? Is he the president?
He, I think he's a board member.
Yeah, I think he's a member.
Yeah, so we can just take, you know, I felt said we can either leave it as care, care of North Sea Gun, Gun Club or take it off and just give it, put it in his name.
Yeah, I think he's most comfortable in that.
Cause you don't wanna have confusion.
And he did provide current his valid hunting license and duck stamp as well, so it, he did supply solely for himself to prove that he could
Yeah, my, my concern was just to have a deep pocket in case something were to happen for, you know, financial responsibility for something that would happen.
Historically, it's been taken care of under one name, so why
Well, because then you're gonna have people going, you know, who's responsible, we're gonna have everybody going in your own directions.
That's up to them to take care of.
Yeah.
We permit the spot to an individual and it's up to those people to be able to manage and maintain their blind.
Right.
So, so we put it in his name and then he, then he'll put a co-perity on someone else on the board as a co-perity?
Yeah, that, that would be acceptable as well.
Yeah, because if we're not following the code, then we're just making a problem.
Yeah, no, if we have a co-perity who is going to be
So if you want to just transfer it in his name or let him come back next week or next meeting with
We're past the deadline for that, so I don't know if you guys would wanna make a special exception to this situation, but
Well, no, I, I think if you just go and he's gotta amend his mailing address.
Yeah, that's all.
That's all, just amendment of a mailing address.
If you amend the transfer application, then you guys would be
Yes, agreeable, yes, I agree.
And then we can add a co-perity next season.
So we'll do, we'll do that for both, just have him come in and amend the transfer application.
Okay, okay.
Do you wanna hold this for right now? You wanna hold it?
Do you wanna hold it?
Or you wanna advance it in the paperwork?
You could advance it, he's got, they gotta amend the mailing address.
Sort of like amend the cover sheet.
Yes.
So if it creates confusion, then you can't do that.
Yeah.
No, no, no.
No, no, it, it, it was sort of an exceptional situation that you've been dealing with, so.
Well, you don't wanna have confusing situations.
No, agreed, agreed.
We'll keep it up a board.
You need this back now?
Oh, no, you're okay if you'd like. I have this on the
That's the only one.
Our next one is
So the next one is also Joseph Kirby, but he is transferring it solely over to his son, Aaron. Um, I looked at, I sent it over to Alan Rich and they said everything looks good pending trustee final approval. Everything is Blue Book. I do just wanna make it known that last year there was an NOV, the first one only for this blind, because it was a failure to call for inspection. But Joseph Kirby was re- permitted his blind and everything was okay, but I did just wanna make that known, yeah.
Is there a cleanup?
But everything is Blue Book compliant.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Okay, next we have Frederick C. Habemeyer, permit number two twenty-one. So Frederick would like to fully transfer over his blind to, um, his blind portion over to James Walker. Um, it is a co- permitted blind with his son, so he's just only solely transferring his portion over to Jim Walker.
So whose permit will be in, name of being Walker's name?
It'll be in Jim Walker's name and then it'll be in Frederick, yes.
As a co-perator, yeah, I'm fine. They've been hunting together for a while.
Wait, which one is transferring?
Two, two, one.
The father or the son?
The father is transferring to James Walker.
Okay, I got you, yep.
The son is staying as a co-perator.
Okay.
Still on the point.
The next one is also Frederick C. Habemeyer. And he is transferring over his portion of the blind to Ethan Walker. Um, so he will keep his son on and then transfer his portion over to Ethan Walker.
The same thing that
Same thing as before.
Yeah, so his son would be co-perator.
Yes.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Okay, next we have John Zalusky. It's permit number one sixty-three. He would like to add a co-perity of Mark Jared Zalusky. I sent it over to Alan Rich. They said everything looks good. It's Blue Book compliant. Um, this would make it so that Mark Jared would have two blinds. He is farther down the line, he is removing himself from one to able to have This would make it so that Mark Jared would have two blinds. He is farther down the line, he is removing himself from one to, able to have two to save the blinds.
Okay, so he's taking his name off the list?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Oh, my favorite duck blind.
Yeah, yes. Next, we have William H. Robinson, Jr., permit number two oh four. He's adding the co-permittee Ben Sheen. I sent this over to Alan Rich. They said everything looks good on their end. It's Blue Book compliant.
I'm fine with that was two.
With the both of them?
Yes.
So, okay, for two thirty-eight as well.
They've both been hunted together for a long time.
So just quick summary, the same scenario for blind number two thirty-eight, just for the record. All right, um, okay, Mr. Ed Warner.
Yes.
We're gonna start with Kim Lester and Michael Lester, permit number ninety-one. Kim Lester would like to remove himself from the blind, and so we give his blind portion over to Michael Lester. I sent it over to Alan Rich. They said everything looks good on their end. It is Blue Book compliant.
Okay.
So he'll have no co-permittee?
Yeah, so Michael will have no co-permittee.
And he'll get one next year. Then he's limited out on blinds.
Yes. Same scenario for. Whoa, sorry. Okay, same scenario for permit number ninety-three. It's Kim Lester and Michael K. Lester. Kim is removing himself and giving his portion of the blind solely to Michael, so Michael will be the only permit holder on the blind.
That'd be Michael's second blind?
Mm-hmm.
He'd be limited out, Mike.
Mm-hmm.
So then, then Kim's going on Stubelek's two permits.
Yes, yes, so Kim removed himself from his two previous blinds in order to get on to Stubelek's.
Okay.
Yes. One second. Okay, so number eighty-eight, William P. Stubelek, he's adding Kim Lester to his blinds. And I sent it over to Alan Rich. They said everything looks great because Kim is removing himself from the two other blinds. They said everything is Blue Book compliant.
Okay.
And just for the record, permit number eighty-nine for William Stubelek, same thing. He is adding Kim Lester as his co-permittee. Alan Rich said everything's great. He removed himself from the two other blinds, so this will be his final second blind that he would be allowed to be on.
All right.
All right, next, we have Robert Downs, permit number fifty-eight. He would like to transfer it fully over to Donald Downs. I sent it to Alan Rich. They gave their okay. It's Blue Book compliant.
Does Don have one blind already?
Um, yes.
So he'll be limited out?
So this'll be his, yes, this'll be his max. All right. Next, we have Brian Simmons. He was in application approved from waitlist, so he would like to take permit number ninety-eight. It's located in East Shinnacock Bay. He supplied his current hunting license, his duck stamp and proof of residency. Everything is Blue Book compliant. I sent it over to Alan Rich and they also gave their approval. Permit number ninety-eight, so it's gonna be.
It probably got voided out.
Oh, it's voided out, yeah, I'm sorry. So it's in East Shinnacock Bay. I can tell you the area, please, hold on. Um, so it's, it's in the shore slash bay area in front of Twenty Sandringham.
Sandringham.
A little west.
Sandringham.
It's on the north side of Shinnacock Bay between Atterbury Road and Middle Park, uh, Four Hundred.
Sandringham area.
Keep going, keep going north.
Go north and west.
Keep going, it's the green one.
So just, now go west.
Go west.
Beside, yep, Little.
West, west.
Go back to him today.
West, 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 the red one there.
There.
Back right there.
Yep, there it is.
Okay. We get the general.
Yep.
The general.
Sorry, Nick.
We're gonna make them a local person right now.
Yes.
So, yeah, everything is on Blue Book compliant.
Yep.
Good, our eight.
Lots of ducks in there this year. They're gonna have a good hunting season.
Okay, so the last one for Mr. Warner is Robert Terry, permit number one oh six. So he would like to transfer his blind fully over to Patrick Terry.
His grandson?
Uh, yes, and I sent it over to Alan Rich and they said everything's good, Blue Book compliant.
Yep. It's right next to Mr. Dunlop's application. Where's Doc?
All right, Ms. Walker, we are going to start with Timothy Seeger, permit number one thirty-one. He would like to trans, this is currently a co-permitted blind. I apologize for the typo on there. It is co- permitted with Kenneth Booth, Jr. So Timothy Seeger would like to fully transfer his portion of the blind to Finn Kelly. Finn Kelly is on one of their blind at the moment, so this would max out his limit. I sent it to Alan Rich. They said everything is good on their end and it's Blue Book compliant.
So the second one you're referring to that is the number two seventy-nine when you say?
So that would be three.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I misspoke. He was already previously.
Cause that would be three, he's already on another one.
That would be three, you're correct. I'm, may I ask to hold both of these and then do some more research? I'm so sorry about that, yeah.
That's okay, we wanna get it right. We get this, a lot of things going on here.
Yes, exactly. It's a lot of waterfowl stuff going on.
Hold it.
Who is he co- permitted with? What'd you say, Jess? Who is he co- permitted with?
Finn with Timothy Seeger on two seventy-nine already. Oh, actually, I apologize. May I speak again on those two?
Yes, you may.
So, I'm understanding my confusion. So Timothy, I mistyped the, my agenda and I'm sorry about that. So, number two seventy-nine is already permitted in Finn Kelly's name with, he's a co-permittee with Timothy Seeger, but Timothy would just fully like to put Finn Kelly as the sole permit holder on that blind.
Two seventy-nine.
Two seventy-nine, yes.
Timothy Seeger's getting off his permit.
So that's a complete transfer.
Yes, that's a complete transfer.
Permit number one thirty-one is a transfer.
Of Tim's co-permittee side, yes.
He only does have two.
Yes, he only does have two. I'm sorry about that.
No, no, no.
So we can move forward with those.
Thank you for clarifying.
Little scrambled eggs up here.
If he did find, if he did find he did have three, then we have to remove him.
Then we'll remove him, okay.
Cut yourself there, that's good.
Yeah, I did. I had to jog my memory again. Happens.
A lot of waterfowl things going on.
Yeah, it's a lot. So next we have up is Mark D. Zaluski and Mark Jared Zaluski.
There's one before that.
No, Shelby B. Terracomo.
Shelby B. Terracomo and Eugene Squires. It's number one ninety-four. So Eugene would like to fully remove himself off of this blind and give his permitted side back to Shelby.
And Eugene requested this?
Yes, Eugene requested this. They came into the office and did it in person. I sent it over to Alan Rich and they said everything looks good pending trustee final approval. It is Blue Book compliant.
Okay, that's great. I'd like to advance that.
Okay. So now we have Mark D. Zaluski and Jared, Mark Jared Zaluski. That's permit number one twenty-eight. Sorry, so Mark Jared Zaluski is removing himself from this blind and transferring his portion solely over to Mark D. Zaluski. This move was made in order for him to be on the other blind that we recently approved.
Permit one sixty-three?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I sent it over to Alan Rich. They said everything looks good pending trustee final approval. Everything is Blue Book compliant.
And again, Mark Jared Zaluski requested this.
Yes, in order to be on, yes.
Yep, okay, thank you.
No problem. Okay. Now for Mr. Parish, we have.
Two more and then exec.
Two more, yes. So we have Sean H. Kilfoyle, permit number two fifty-six. He was approved from the waitlist. So he would like to take permit number two fifty-six. It's located by the Pecanic River. He.
Can you show us where that is?
Sure. It's the south side of the Pecanic River, east of Colonel's Island.
Right, right, across from the golf course.
Okay, so it's southeast of the island.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, he supplied his current hunting license and his current duck stamp and proof of residency. Everything is Blue Book compliant. I sent it over to Alan Rich and they gave their approval.
Yeah, move to advance that.
Okay. Next, we have Mr. Todd J. Smith. There's no permit number for this application. It is a requested new location for a duck blind. I sent it over to Alan Rich and this is what Rich's response was. All, you will have to forward to the trustee board for their final determination, but our recommendation is that these locations be denied since we already have two locations registered on the same island, one of which is on the waitlist for someone to choose. If this subject is on the waitlist, he may apply for the location if all of his paperwork shows he's a town resident and meets all the requirements. But adding an additional location where spots are depicted on the map would be a tremendous safety issue and should be denied.
Yeah, that's it right there.
Yes, it is for Swan Island.
Where was, where did he want it on the island?
Uh, where he, he proposed this location where Nick's mouse is and he also did supply a second one, which is on the north side of the island right there where his cursor is as well.
But he's saying, it's a safety issue, so.
Yes.
But we should keep that on the file, so, so if someone tries to do it again, we don't go this far.
Sure, I'll, yeah, we'll keep this, we keep all of our denied.
So that's denied.
So we deny that.
Okay, so that concludes our waterfowl portion of today's meeting, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions about waterfowl.
Okay.
How many people did we go through on the week this, this year?
Um, I believe I just called number thirty-eight, so I'm moving, I still have a couple more days. We have four more spots available to give out.
Okay, so how many spots did get, get back this year?
Three, we did Brian Simmons, Sean Kilfoyle and William Clare. And then only one spot was just not renewed, which was number two hundred, Ronald Yules gave his spot up. He is like returning it back to us.
So basically, you have four more, you said?
Mm-hmm, four more. There's three in Rich's Bay and then one in East Shinnacock Bay.
So you're going down the list?
Yeah, going down the list. I've reached the people who haven't been called before, so that's nice.
It must be very happy.
And then if they don't want it, you're gonna start back at the top and work your way down?
Um, no, I keep going down until I reach, now there's only ninety-seven people on the waitlist, so when I reach number ninety-seven, I don't think I'll be able to reach them by November tenth or November fifteenth. But I'm gonna try my best.
Thank you very much. I know some of them are too nice to you.
No, but it's okay, I understand. They're eager to do it, no problem.
Try the best we can do.
Yes.
Thanks, Lanaya.
No problem.
So, that being said, we have executive session on our agenda and my suggestion is that we adjourn our work session and we, right? We go into our work session, executive session. So I will make a motion to adjourn our work session.
Second.
Go into executive session for the purposes of discussing litigation issues and personnel issues. Second, all in favor?
All right.